Get started. This is January fourteenth, a work session. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to their Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as small.
Okay, we have two items on the agenda. First one is Riley County Police Department and Director Butler is going to be speaking this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ready and members of the City Commission. It's good to see you all here in 2020. I have a brief update on some of the activities we've been involved in. Some of these you may have heard of already. We try hard to use social media and our local media partners to keep the community informed. I think the most obvious one is since my last update, we now have a permanent Assistant Director, Kurt Muldrick was, we removed the interim status from his title, so now he is in that role. I'm sure most of you know that, so I'm very excited to have made that decision and moved on to others. Also, very obvious is we are currently field testing new uniform options for our patrol officers. Many people ask why we are doing this. Early on in my tenure, I conducted an employee survey and it covered a lot of items that were important to the employees, but the number one suggestion from our employees was to consider changing the current police uniform. They cited several reasons. Some were comfort, durability, the look of it. A lot of the officers just didn't like the look of it. Another thing that came up during this evaluation process before we decided to field test uniforms is, and I didn't know this, that this style of uniform, the color of the pants, the shirts, this is becoming less common in law enforcement. So many of the suppliers that have supplied this particular style of uniform in the past are not making them anymore, and the ones that are are telling us the same thing. At some point, because of low demand, we're going to stop manufacturing this. So because of what the employees wanted us to explore and because of that information, decided to start field testing different options. So we put together a uniform and equipment committee and it involved different officers, male, female, different shifts, to start exploring with vendors different uniform options. And it was about six or seven months to narrow down the list. So now they are out working the street, wearing these uniforms, and they're all different. They have about three different options. And the options also include wearing an outer ballistic vest, which I'll talk about that a little bit in a minute. But they're required daily to fill out evaluations on how the uniform wears, the durability. They wash it almost every day to accelerate what it'll look like after several washings to see if the color fades. So they're doing a lot of different things. Employee, excuse me, citizen feedback is something they're also keeping track of. So once this 90-day or so field testing period ends, they'll make a recommendation to me about what they would like us to do, and then we'll evaluate that. The ballistic outer vest, I'm not, for most of my career, when these started appearing on police officers around the country, I was not a big fan of how this looked. I thought it looked way too militaristic and tactical. I wasn't a big fan. And my opinion changed a few years ago. In my previous job, I hired a young officer who was about five foot two and 105 pounds or so. I'm just guessing. I never asked her how much she weighed. And in today's policing, we require our officers to wear a lot more gear than they did when I started my career. And she literally could not put everything on her duty belt that we required her to carry. So someone suggested that we try an outer vest for her to mount her equipment on that, and that worked very well. She also commented how it took a lot of weight off of her waist and hips, which was causing her pain and discomfort, and I've heard that from others. So we evaluated it there and decided to go ahead and authorize our officers there to wear them mainly for practical reasons, flexibility, not because it looked cool, but it really was more functional. And one of my criteria was, I don't want it to look like it's militaristic. Now, it's hard in some ways to get away from that perception from some people, but that is part of my evaluation. If they do recommend an outer vest as part of the uniform, I'm going to make it optional, but if we do it, I want it to blend as well as it can into whatever color shirt or shirt and pants that they're wearing. So I just wanted to tell you this formally, how we got where we are and what we can expect in the future at any point. If you want to ask any questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Next thing, on the communications center, we have struggled with turnover in that unit since I've been here. Up until about two weeks ago, we had seven vacancies in the 24-person unit. We recently hired six and they started working this week, and they're being trained. We still have one vacancy, but at the end of last year, that became effective January one, I took a plan to the Law Board to create a career ladder program in the communications center. And that also involved a modest pay increase for those career steps. The idea was to create a dispatcher one and two position with dispatcher one having fewer responsibilities and training requirements. And if they did well there, then they would elevate to dispatcher two, which would involve all of the training that we had delivered in the past. We found since I've been here, during the last hiring process, two of the three trainees we had ended up leaving because they couldn't keep up with the training. So we felt like it was important to create a break in the training where we would train them in fewer duties in a shorter period at dispatcher one, and if they felt like they were ready to move on, and we felt like they were ready to move on, they would complete the additional training to become a full-fledged dispatcher. If they were struggling and they wanted more time to become acclimated with their new job and the duties, then we would let them stay at dispatcher one, and that's, those are the roles they would serve. They wouldn't be on the radio. So it's really a mutual agreement, and it involves a way to try to reduce the turnover by giving them that breather or that break if they need it to become better at their job before moving on to the next one. So time will tell if we make progress. I would, I'm going to be conservative at the end of the year if we're averaging only three vacancies. If we can improve our vacancy or our turnover rate by 100% or reduce it by 50%, then I will be very pleased with our progress, and we'll keep monitoring how it's going. We are working on a presentation for the Aggieville substation possibility. We're working on a PowerPoint right now that we probably will bring to city staff first and go over that with them. And if everything looks good there, then I've asked the city manager if he would schedule us for the joint city-county meeting in February, where we'll present it to the city and the county for feedback. So we're continuing to work on that. Our first radio purchases have occurred for the new P-25 radio system, which, from talking to Mr. Collins, should go live sometime this year. He's hoping sometime this summer. Live doesn't mean we'll be switched over and operating on it. Live means then they'll start testing the system to make sure everything's operational. But we're starting to purchase those radios for that eventual switch over to the new P-25 system. We will end up between portable and mobile radios, just the radios, the radio mics and holders, spending about $1 million in the police department to re-outfit all of our officers with those radios needed. And lastly, not that you all are heavily involved in this, but we're working with the county on the new firearms range. The firearms range work is continuing. We're working with the vendor and the county so we can hopefully be in there before the end of the summer. The lease ends for the current site at the end of June. We have contingency plans in place. If we can't get our required training done by them, by then, I think we can, but if not, we have other options. But we're hoping to at least have the basic qualification firing line in place sometime before the end of the summer is the goal. That's all I have on my list. Happy to answer any questions about those items or anything else.
Sure. Any questions for Director Butler or comments? I guess there isn't any. You did an outstanding job. I know you're going to go on to Riley and present there. I do just have one question. Since the stabilization center has opened, did you see, how are you working with Pawnee? What kind of impact did you see? I know she's going to present here at our city-county county meeting, but I just wanted a brief synopsis on the impact that you felt as far as RCPD.
I don't have any data or statistics. Anecdotally, my officers have told me it is fantastic, having a local mental health option for citizens who need treatment, whether it's voluntary or not, to have it done here and not go through the other processes and driving distances that we've had to deal with in the past. I have heard that they've been fully occupied and providing, so I know there's 10 counties that have access to this center. If I had to guess, I would say you could double the capacity of that center and probably still have it full. There was a lot of unmet needs, as you know. Policing ends up being the catchment for folks with mental health needs that don't need to be in jail, don't need to have force used upon them because they're not getting the treatment that they need. As a police officer, it's almost full circle for me because when I first started my career, we had a local unit like this in our hospital that we always could count on. And when the philosophy changed to empty out beds in those kinds of facilities and put the money back in communities for local treatment, it was a good idea, but the money didn't come. And so we are where we are today, and I'm hoping this will serve as an example for the rest of Kansas, that if you take those dollars and send them to the communities to do this local stabilization, you won't need to restaff and rebuild these other hospitals that have been hurt so badly by lack of funding and lack of accreditation.
Right. Well, thank you. I do, I do, I'm looking forward to hearing from Robin Cole as well on Thursday, and also looking forward to what happens with Medicaid expansion because that's one of the conduits we need for the funding source because it does need to be staffed, especially since it's being utilized so much more than we anticipated.
I agree. I believe if that does occur, you know, I'm not expressing an opinion about it, but if more dollars are going to your local hospitals and local mental health organizations, I think you'll see improved services in those areas.
I agree. Thank you. Anything, yes, Aaron.
Director Butler, just on that thought, maybe after the stabilization center's been here a year or so, we have a way to show any kind of cost or reallocation that was saved from your department. That would just, I don't know, that's more complicated than it sounds, but it would certainly be something to think about as we try to find ways to measure that cost savings.
You know, I'll mention that to my staff to put their antenna up about this. As you know, we have two crisis coresponders on contract that are Pawnee mental health employees. So they have really helped this community long before I arrived here in dealing with these crises with our officers on the street many times to try to get people back on their treatment plans and be cooperative about it without getting themselves in trouble or end up having an involuntary commitment. So because we have that in place, you know, I know this is, the big difference I see is now we're not having to transport people to other communities for treatment. They're being treated here locally. And again, I'm not the expert, Robin is, but my understanding is that well over 75% of people in mental health crisis can be stabilized within 72 hours and then be allowed to stay in their community safely. If it requires longer treatment than that, this facility is not the place for them, but that's not what the majority of patients need or clients need. So I'll let you know.
Well, thank you, and I look forward to Robin's presentation, as I said, and thanks for all the updates on the other critical points that are going on with RCPD.
You're welcome. You'll have a good evening. Thank you.
Next item for today's work session, Bicycle and Pedestrian Systems Plan update by John Adams, our senior planner. Oh, oh, and Wyatt Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the commission. John Adams, senior planner. City and Kansas State University, I'm sorry, this is a bit of an agenda first. I'll be covering the first few items on this, and then we'll turn it over to Wyatt, and then we'll answer questions together after that. City and KCU originally created a bicycle master plan in 1998. It contained quite a number of projects, as you can see, ranked into three levels of priority, and included not only on-street facilities but new or better accommodations at destinations such as bike parking. City also created a bicycle advisory committee, which transformed into the Bike and Ped Advisory Committee in 2015, and its intent was to advise staff on routes, linkages, and project priorities, to plan, develop, and promote cycling and pedestrian activities and educational programs. So this is the existing network, not a lot in terms of dedicated infrastructure, a lot what you see in most of these facilities in the core between downtown and the campus are the shared lanes, what are called the bike boulevards. And the system is not very well-connected, as you can see. And given that and the fact that it's been 20 years since we created the last plan, we figured it was high time to update the plan and look at where we need to change priorities if we needed to. We applied for and received a planning grant. City and MPO both applied for and received a planning grant in 2018 from KDOT to do the update and to add a pedestrian component to it. So it's not just a bike plan, it's a bike pedestrian plan. We hired Alta Planning, CFS Engineering, and Shockey Consulting to develop the plan and help us with the outreach and engagement. We had a steering committee that was made up of various interests, including the chamber, the police, developers, Kansas State, USD 383, Parks and Recreation, and the city manager's office, to come up with the goals and priorities that would go into this document. We went to various organizations early on, like both Rotary Clubs, Campus Planning Committee, Aggieville Business District, Downtown Manhattan Incorporated, and to the chamber to talk about the plan objectives and to get their feedback and input on it. It was really very, I was impressed with the level of enthusiasm that they had to see that we were trying to improve biking and walking in the city. We also, another outreach thing we had was an interactive map that people could go to that marked up with suggested routes and to outline notable problem areas in the city. I think the most interesting form of outreach we did were a number of demonstration projects around town. Our kickoff was here at the north end of City Park at the interface with Aggieville at Fremont and North Manhattan Avenue. As you know, a lot of people use this parking lot here and then go into Aggieville or to campus from there. That means that it was an ideal location to do a demonstration project that would enhance the safety and utility, usability of this crossing for pedestrians as they were using it, because Fremont is a collector's street and it's fairly busy. For this project, for all of the demo projects, the consultant engineer designed all of them to meet the requirements set by the city engineer for minimum turning radiuses and lane widths to make sure that the auto, the motor vehicle cars were moving through there just as well as they were before. We went out early in April, a morning in April, 11th, I think, to start the project. The engineers from CFS started layering, laying out the curb extensions while we mixed up paint and got started on the piano keys. And so in just a few hours' time, we transformed this intersection into this. And we were able to do it, oh, and resulting in some very happy pedestrians. And we were able to do it for not very much money. Total bill on this one was $2,371, just for the materials and all of that. And the ones that are in the darker red, the typeface, those are ones that can be used again and again, and that we did on those projects, and can be used in the future if we want to do other demonstration projects or maybe some temporary installations in town. And so for two days while the project was up, we talked to people, explained the objectives, gathered opinions, and used the occasion for education and dialogue. But in the meantime, a plan was being produced by Alta Planning in conjunction with our steering committee. And I'm going to briefly go over the goals and the implementation projects in the plan. First, I want to clarify that this plan, who this plan is for. It's not for this kind of biker. It's for the majority of us. It's a plan for these people, and these people, and these people. We're doing it because these sort of situations exist. Can you make out the cow path in that line there? Because people have destinations they have to go, even if there's no easy way to get there, or a safe way even. It's about treating walkers and bikers with some respect, building a simple and dignified system of transportation choices for people, because we don't build that way for cars. So then the goals that were developed by the steering committee were really pretty simple, and ones you might expect and you would see in almost any bike plan. It's about equity and connectivity. Give walkers and bikers equal facilities or good facilities, and make sure that they're connected so you can have a continuous route, so you can make a destination, go from one destination to another one and be able to do that safely. And it's about safety and comfort while you're making those trips, and it's about building support and momentum in the community, to build a culture that's supportive of biking and walking as modes of transportation. So with those goals in mind and with the existing system as a starting point, we developed a prioritization schema that factored in connectivity, safety, comfort, equity, demand, and support. Demand was determined by the density of places and people, so you can probably guess where the highest demand might exist. You have a concentration of daily activities in this area due to the University, Aggieville, downtown, and the people, all the people living in this area. How many people? Just to give you some context, within one mile of Aggieville live nearly 25,000 people. That's almost half the population. And at a mile and a half, it's 32,000 people. Looking at a land use map of the core, that's roughly the area we're talking about, Fourth Street to Sunset, Claflin to Yuma. And then in the context of the city as a whole. And so in the proposed facilities map, you will see that the greatest concentration of the protected and striped bike lanes are in the core area. The ultimate objective is to provide a comprehensive system across the city, because there are other destinations and pockets of demand. But we can't build everything at once. We needed to sort the projects by feasibility as well, and that was measured by complexity and cost. Some projects might need major construction or careful design and outreach in order to arrive at what is the correct solution for that area. Others might require only some restriping or some very minor improvements. And that resulted in this matrix, this sorting grid, rather. Do now is a high priority and high feasibility. Do when, high priority and low feasibility. Do if is a lower priority but high feasibility, and then long-term is both low in priority and feasibility. So that resulted in this map, an implementation map. Yellow is the do now, and when you zoom into the core, you can see that almost all the do nows are located here, and they include bike boulevards, bike lanes, multi-use paths, and in some cases, protected bike lanes. Most of us are familiar with bike lanes and bike boulevards and with the eight and 10-foot wide multi-use paths, but a protected bike lane, in case you didn't know, adds more safety and comfort for cyclists on the road by adding additional buffer space and/or physical barriers, such as the parking lane that is in this example. And then a two-way cycle track can be used where there are fewer intersecting streets and driveways on one side of a street, or where there's, or if that's where the desired location or destination is located. And we have a perfect example here along the west side of North Manhattan Avenue. The campus is a major destination, and there aren't that many openings, as many openings on that side between Blumente Avenue and Claflin Road. Ultimately, we would like to do a two-way cycle track on the west side of that street. So those are the basics of the plan. Those are the basics of the plan. The pathway that is before us now is to adopt it as a component of the comprehensive plan. We have published notice and are planning to go to the planning board on the 3rd of February to have a public hearing on that, so they can adopt and recommend. And then we, which should be on schedule for the 18th to come to you for your first reading and hearing on that. And now I will turn it over to Wyatt.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Wyatt Thompson, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. The plan also does address some implementation strategies. In the latter chapters, it identifies a variety of funding sources that could be utilized for some of these projects. As John spoke about, some of the projects are relatively easy to implement in terms of striping, low-cost type of facilities. Some are more expensive, obviously, building new multi-use path or changing roadway configurations are going to cost more, and so we'll have some decisions to make as we work toward the ultimate build-out and implementation of that ultimate pedestrian bicycle network map that John showed. One thing that we did want to talk about in more detail tonight is the recreation and trail sales tax. This is a, one of those funding sources that could be used to implement the plan, and we thought this was a good opportunity to update you on the state of that tax, some things we've been using it for, and some proposed projects that we would recommend. So as you may recall, in November of 2017, voters approved a quarter percent sales tax to fund recreation centers, improvements at Seco Park, as well as trails, and there were about $2 million of the 27 and a half total that would be generated through that 10-year tax was dedicated to trail development. We began collecting revenue in April of 2018, and we've collected about $4.7 million to date, right at the end of last year, which is right on track with where projections had us. And so things are going well in that regard. We have made a number of commitments already to that, from that tax, towards some projects. You can see here a list of construction and/or design projects that have been, that have utilized that source. The Old Blue River Trail, a small portion of the funding for that came through recreation and trails tax. We've designed a couple of railroad crossings, and we're currently designing the Clarenberg Trail in City Park on the east side from Pointe to Osage to make that last narrow bit of sidewalk a wider multi-use path. The construction of the K-18 Bridge Trail over Wildcat Creek was something that has been authorized through KDOT, and we'll have a 10-foot wide multi-use path over that bridge, addressing some of the pictures that John had showed where people were balancing on the edge of that bridge. And then pending, a word, notice of award hopefully from KDOT is the construction of the casement trail. We have a Transportation Alternative Grant submitted to KDOT, and we're waiting to hear back if we receive that. If we do, we would dedicate some money from this fund towards completion of that trail project as well. So our total expended or committed from this fund to date is around $270,000. And the goal, I apologize, some of the numbers got misaligned, but the goal as we, as we talked about the sales tax during the lead-up to the vote and then following the vote, was to leverage those local dollars against other state, federal grant dollars or private dollars as well. And so you can kind of see here how we've been able to leverage that funding. The Old Blue River Trail is a good example of something that's been built. You know, we had $141,000 total to construct the project. Only 26,000 of that was from local dollars. The rest were state and local, federal and private matches, grant matches to that. Similar to the rail trail crossings in South Manhattan to Con Circle, Clarenberg Trail, we would identify using community development block grants to fund the construction of those projects and only using the local dollars for the design. The K-18 Bridge was a KDOT match where we were required to put down 10%, and then the casement trail would be a similar match opportunity through KDOT. And so you see the leverage there from $270,000 of local money. We're able to leverage 1.6 million in other funding to implement a lot of those projects, which is about an 85% return on those dollars. And we would envision going forward, seeking additional opportunities like that to leverage those local dollars for these other projects. So some potential future projects that we could do that are all in line with the recommendations of the Bicycle Pedestrian Systems Plan, one of those is a citywide loop. And so you can see the blue line is kind of the loop around the city. That was envisioned as part of the 1998 linear trail phase two plan to complete that loop. We've completed 12 of the 18 miles to date, and so we have about six miles to go to complete 100% loop around the city, all multi-use, eight-foot or wider multi-use path. There's also the Magenta Line in the southwest part of the city. This is a more recent addition to the loop in order, kind of a neighborhood loop, you could say, to start to connect the Warner Park, Miller Ranch neighborhoods. could say, to start to connect the Warner Park, Miller Ranch neighborhoods through the newer areas of Miller Ranch, Lee Mill Heights, Stonehaven, all the way to Annaburk Park. And that's utilizing a lot of the new property we've acquired in the Stonehaven area, the VMI Tract, the Roger Schultz Community Park, the Ledgestone Park, and then connecting back into the Linear Trail system. So there's kind of a, a loop, and then a secondary loop that could be developed. And that's, that loop concept is something we heard a lot about through some of the community meetings we held, the trail talk meetings we held in 2017 and 2018. There's a lot of desire to be able to get on a trail and not have to come to the dead end, or not have to just navigate your way through unmarked neighborhood streets or whatnot to find your way around the city. Also, the Ultimate Pedestrian Network on the right-hand side, all the dashed lines are proposed as part of the Bicycle Pedestrian Systems Plan, and there's a whole host of those that are multi-use paths. There are some projects that are, where a trail or a multi-use path isn't recommended, and it may be better to have a sidewalk and a bike lane, or a sidewalk and some other protected bike infrastructure on the street. And the plan does differentiate where, where multi-use trails do make sense and are recommended, and where other types of facilities are recommended based on the demographics, the number of people, the conditions in the right-of-way, the terrain, various things like that. During our trail talks, neighborhood meetings, we did ask the community if they had $2 million to spend on trails, how would they prioritize that? And we gave three options, just as kind of a starting point for discussion. Scenario one was, was one major project, put all $2 million into one thing, so that we could say at the end of the day, we built that thing. Not a lot of support for just one thing. The community really preferred Scenario Two or Three, which was kind of more of a mix of projects and priorities, you know, maybe some investment towards completing the trail loop, but also some other smaller projects that might serve as trail connectors, connecting neighborhoods to that trail system, or connecting neighborhood to neighborhood, or neighborhood to commercial area for work. There was a lot of discussion and some preference for hiking paths as well. Hiking paths aren't necessarily addressed in the Bicycle Pedestrian Systems Plan, because they're not for necessarily all ages and abilities. But that is a priority for Parks and Recreation going forward, is building more of those recreational hiking, mountain biking-type paths, where the terrain and environment are suitable for those. And then there was some discussion about, you know, existing maintenance, and trying to deal with some maintenance issues in, on the existing trail system, and making sure that the trails could stay open and usable for residents throughout the year. And so this is just kind of a summary of some of that, that feedback, multi-use paths to complete the loop, hiking trails, some funds for smaller projects, but also being aware that there is other city funding through the Sidewalk Gap Fund, for example, to fill sidewalk gaps, and so maybe some of those neighborhood sidewalks could be funded with that source, and not with, with this one. So keeping all of that in mind, this is a list of potentially recommended trail projects. We'll start with trail signage, a very, relatively simple, inexpensive fix to help people find their way on the trails. Paving the Old Blue River Trail, it's currently limestone screenings, makes it hard to use in wet weather, makes it hard to use in the snow. We're also working with Evergy to install lighting along that trail in response to some neighborhood requests. And so potentially, and also add signage, and so paving that concrete trail, to into a concrete trail could potentially make that more usable year-round for people to get from the Northview area to shopping and employment opportunities under McCall Corridor. There's a couple of trails on the, in the Kimball Corridor. I'm gonna grab some water real quick. Vanessa to Berkshire in the northwest part of Kimball, where it starts to turn the corner to go south toward Anderson, and then Candlewood to Sethchild. The cost difference there is relative to Vanessa to Berkshire, there's no infrastructure, trail or sidewalk infrastructure there today. Candlewood to Sethchild, there is a sidewalk, and so the lesser cost is to simply upgrade the sidewalk to a multi-use path. Instead of putting the sidewalk back in reconstruction, you put the wider path there. K-18 Sidewalk, 17th to Westwood, is, would follow the, the K-18 Bridge replacement project to really fill the final gap along that Fort Riley Boulevard corridor, where so many people walk, and the desire lines are fairly evident. Sethchild Commons Connection is a new crossing at Sethchild's to connect Linear Trail near Home Depot, across to the Target and other businesses that are there in Sethchild Commons. The Amherst Sidewalk, Sethchild Crossing is another crossing of Sethchild to connect the Amherst Neighborhoods, Miller Ranch Neighborhoods, directly to Linear Trail. Some southwest hiking trails through that, that southwest portion of the loop to connect some of those new properties together, and create a, a trail route from Warner Park to Annaburk Park. And then a couple of feasibility studies, or preliminary engineering studies, looking at potentially a, another bridge on Wildcat Creek to replace the low-water crossing behind the Four Point Sheraton Hotel. This is an area that, that frequently floods. It's an area that frequently, even after the water goes down, the mud is there, making it impassable for several weeks while we wait for it to dry out, to bring equipment in, to remove that sediment. And it, it happens frequently, and it's a, and then, and we, we hear about it, you, you may hear about it from residents as well. One solution could be a bridge to cross Wildcat Creek there, and so the feasibility study would be to determine the location and some of those costs and permitting type issues. There is an, an alternative route that we could look at along Polisca Lane, utilizing that existing right-of-way, that wouldn't require a bridge. And so before we went down this path of a bridge, I think staff would like to vet that kind of option first. Certainly, you can do a lot of improvements at grade before you can build a bridge over the river, so. But that, either way, we think addressing that area of the Linear Trail is an important one. And then finally, the Marlat Trail, from Dennison to Browning, this is a piece of the city loop. It's long been envisioned to connect those areas. This would serve to connect the two middle school and the middle school recreation center sites, and create a multi-use path from Anthony Middle School to Eisenhower Middle School, continuously along Marlat. We see a lot of cyclists along Marlat, utilizing the side of the road until they get to Dennison, where they can pick up the trail. So obviously, this is in the county, and so we would need some coordination with the county and potential partnership on a future project, but the preliminary engineering study would help identify some of those issues and costs that we could then use to pursue additional grant funding potentially. And so then this, this map identifies what, shows what those projects are. The yellow, the gold lines show the projects where we've already committed some of these funds to either design and/or construction, and then the bright blue lines are the projects that I just described. And you can start to see that it is connecting trail to trail, and connecting park to park, and starting to fill in some of the gaps to create some of those major loops around the community. And with that, John Meyer, open for questions or discussion.
Thank you. Questions for John or Wyatt? You must have done an outstanding job. Questions or comments?
Yeah. I want to make just one comment, which I haven't seen in any of these plans, and I know folks may not like it, but these bike boulevards, you know, and painting on the pavements, I'm not a real fan of that, because my wife and I are terrified to ride on those with our bikes, because we're gonna get run over. Have we considered one-way streets? Because, because it seems to me that this bike boulevard idea in the lane, you know, one-way street, you, you could have parking on one side, bike lane on the other, might be easier for the snowplows. And we used to have them here in 1980, when I first moved to Manhattan, when I taught at K-State, when I was doing Army ROTC. There were one-way streets over there on Osage where my parents lived, and it seemed to work then. It seems to me that, you know, I know that's a major change, because it's messing with Public Works and everything else on redirecting traffic, but if we're truly concerned about safety, and we want people to use them, I'd like to have some people just take a look at that and see if it makes any sense.
Yeah, actually, that never came up as a discussion point when we were looking at this. We were looking at the streets as they already were. We never approached Public Works, or, that discussion never came up during the Steering Committee to do that. So we can start having the discussion and see about the feasibility on that one.
Just a question about the Old Blue River Trail. On, on the funding leverage, it has 141,000 multiple sources, but then a couple slides later, it's a 250,000 concrete paving. What's the gap there? Where, am I, can you elaborate a little bit more between that, those two numbers?
Yeah, so the, the original project to construct Old Blue River Trail, the contract was $141,000, with some, some soft costs in construction. That was to construct a limestone screenings trail. The majority of that cost was in the earthwork to, to set the trail base and elevation. And so then to add, to pave that is the additional 250,000 estimated. I should say that all the costs that I pointed out were kind of order of magnitude costs. We haven't done detailed estimates on those projects, but that's kind of the range. So the, the 250 is to pave the existing trail along the alignment that it is today.
And you mentioned lighting might be, that, that's totally separate from what that 250 is, that anything else would be in addition.
Correct. We're, we're working with Evergy to, to install essentially streetlights, which would become part of, it would, it would be paid for, like other streetlights are paid for. Evergy owns the poles, and we pay a monthly service charge in order to have that light. And so that's, that's the approach that we're taking in order to get light there quickly, in order to install lights like we have at City Park around the trail there, where we own the poles, or downtown, significantly more upfront cost to, to do that.
And on your list of, you know, recommended projects, I, I think that's a pretty solid list, good, good thing there, and I like to, I like the emphasis on trying to get the two loops put in place. I, I think those will be used a lot by people that just recreationally, you know, bike, and you can stay off the roads, and I think, I think that's a good way to go. And for sure, that Wildcat Creek Bridge, I think, you know, studying an alternate route makes sense to me. I've, I've ridden that a number of times, and, and that thing's like the Grand Canyon in there, and I just can't imagine the cost of a bridge going across there, and then there's gonna be the hazard of, I'd hate to fall off of that thing, you know, you'd have to put a basket around the whole thing, it's gonna be so high up in the air. But if there's an alternate route that can be done, I think that'll save us a lot of money, makes a lot more sense. But you're absolutely right, that thing is just not usable for large parts of the year because of the mud, and, you know, when the water is high, you can't go at all, and then the mud makes it just awful to take your bike down there later. Only other solution I could think of is we could have zip lines for bikes. But that's probably a little bit too hazardous.
What's, what's the status of the trail down along from Pecan Circle East? I know it goes on, went underwater last year, I don't know if it did this year, but necessarily. But is that, is it usable?
Yes, it's, it's open.
Okay.
And we're working to, to clean it off more. So, at the moment, it's, after the floods, it deposited a lot of silt over that whole area, and in some, a lot of places through that area, from Pecan to South Manhattan, the trail is the low point.
Right.
And so if it does rain, or as we have snow melt here recently, you know, water's gonna pond on the trail, and we're working to clear some of that sediment, get some channels out toward the creek to drain that water off. It's a challenging area, obviously, it's, it's, it's low, and it's another area where we know it's going to continue to flood, you know, as Wildcat Creek does whatever Wildcat Creek does. So it is currently open, though.
I was curious, when I read the section, page 36, about equity, and I wondered what your definition, I, I, I saw that you've pointed out the salary for the whole community, and the population density through, in several of the key areas in the community. I just wondered if, whether low income is, how, how important low income was to your calculations?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, on the equity map, I think that was a combination of population density and, and income levels.
And what?
And income levels.
And income. Population income. I know, that's, but it talks about, the primary information here is that the median household income in Manhattan is, and it's lower than Riley County in the state of Kansas, but I just wondered about the actual, I want to be sure, that low income is also factored in here as some weight, and I don't mean go back and do the study, don't get me, I just wanted to know, I guess, if it's...
Right. And you're, you're citing the text, and then the map on page 38, equity map, the next one, that does have a combination of income and then, and also density. So we, we don't have the numbers, we don't have the figures, they're, they're embedded in the data that are in the map.
Okay.
But you're not gonna see them listed in the plan, section by section.
Because I can't find that.
No. Yeah, you wouldn't be finding it. This is, this is only the results.
Okay, yeah.
Of that.
I'm supportive of the Old Blue River Trail improvements. I'm not excited about paving it all, at the price tag, so I don't know if there's, you know, City Park, we paved one side, and then another, and then another, and we still have, you know, some improvements to make. I don't know how you could do it in phases either, but I'm sure there's some spots that are softer. I know the limestone shavings, when it, we get a heavy rain, they're, at the Northeast Park at least, they are, you just can't use the trail. You just pick up all that on your shoes, and better off walking on the grass, or just not going there at all. But I am, I think that the topics, it's the most, it's the highest priced of everything here, and I'd like to see some lighting, it is really dark back there. And I, I think there are people using it for employment and go-to-work, so it's beyond I had another thought, but I'll have to, I've lost it, I'll think of it.
When we're, a bunch of this money from this quarter percent sales tax was supposed to go to the recreation centers, are they trying to, and I know some of this was gonna try to be a pay-as-you-go kind of thing, are you, are you kind of divvying up the proceeds as they come in? You're not gonna spend the first 15 million on the, on the rec centers, and everybody else has to wait eight years. Obviously, that's not the plan. Are you trying to cut out the 10% of the sales tax as it comes in for the trail projects and such, set aside 70% of it? This may be a Bernie question, or 70% of it for the recreation centers, and then, because I, I've heard that the Seco stuff is gonna have to wait. Is that like 10 years till everything else is paid for? Expand on my limited understanding of, of how that's supposed to work.
Sure, I'll, I'll take a stab at it, and staff can help me out if I, if, if I say something wrong, but essentially, we are accumulating cash. My understanding is, we are peeling off our pro-rata share of, of trails money as it accumulates, so that, that percentage is being accumulated for that, and that's part of what Wyatt illustrated that is going towards matching projects. The rest of it is, we are accumulating it, so we're, we're doing close to a pay-as-you-go. We're not gonna pay 100% cash, we are planning to use temporary notes. Last temp note sale was about 1.4%, so there'll be some limited interest costs, but we're not planning to permanently bond the projects. And so, we'll do temp notes on the rec centers, and then take the cash that we have to pay that off, and then we'll start accumulating cash again for the Seco portion. But we are accumulating the pro-rata share as we gain it for the trails.
So, so the Seco projects, everybody understands that they're not gonna happen anytime soon.
And we were pretty upfront about that, in the, in the whole process, that that would be the case, and it's only a 10-year tax, so that's what's...
It can only be pushed so far back.
Right.
Yeah, Mark, we generate about 2.75 million a year. 8.5 million is a number you can remember for each of the middle schools and Seco. 8.5 million is a number you can remember for each of the middle schools and CECO. So, that's 25.5 of the 27.5 that we'll generate. There'll be another 2 million for trails, which is roughly 200K a year.
All right, very good.
CECO Park is currently scheduled in the 2025, 2026 timeframe. There's about a year of design, and then, maybe a year of construction. That's what we're targeting at the moment.
And that's mostly redoing the colored softball field, baseball fields, and what else? Tennis courts?
Yeah, it's rebuilding the ball, the five ball fields into four ball fields, and replacing the tennis courts that are there with up to 12. And parking and ancillary other improvements related to those facilities.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, that, that was actually one of my questions. So, the 4.7 million is what we've collected so far, right? And then, 270,000 is going towards these projects?
Yes.
Okay, so you also highlighted the CDPG funds and KDOT funds. Is that already dedicated, or is that what we are hoping to get? Is that already a, we know it's coming this way?
Uh, those are things we're hoping to get. Well, CDPG, you know, we, annually, we find out what the allocation is, and then we direct it as we can towards some of the projects that'll help low-income areas, low and middle-income areas, with pedestrian projects primarily. And then, TA grants, the transportation alternatives, that every year, we try for it. Last year was the first time in a long time where we got nothing. But, from, going from a relatively large amount of money statewide, they only had, I think, something like 7 million statewide last year. If I believe, if I recall correctly, it's about a sixth of what it was before that? Okay, and this year, the same sort of thing. We put in for most of the same projects we did last year, including some Safe Routes ones and the Casement Trail. And we pulled back, held back on a couple of others because we wanted to be better poised for those in a year or two. So, we are still crossing our fingers on getting those grants.
Because that's about a million dollars from the CDPG and KDOT, and all of these things that, that are dedicated. I just wanted to make sure that, um, where we are in that hope of getting them, yes.
So, the, the CDPG funding for the Clarenburg Trail and the Pecan Circle improvements are within the current plan year, and so, they're, they're not spent. You haven't authorized those contracts to build those things yet, but those are contracts that would be coming to you probably May, in the summer, early summertime, to, to award construction on those two projects. The, the Manhattan Rail project is probably getting delayed a little bit because of the South Manhattan Interceptor Storm Sewer Project that you all discussed at your last meeting, I believe. The K-18 Bridge is, I believe, committed?
Correct. Yeah, so, go ahead, keep going, Wyatt, but yes, K-18, that has already been committed by KDOT to go to bid this spring. Keep going, Wyatt, I got some more up to do.
And then, the, the Casement Trail, we're still waiting on the, on the TA grant. So, if we don't get the TA grant, then that commitment isn't set in stone. If we do get it, that'll, that would be, we would envision this funding source being part of the funding strategy for the city match for that TA grant, but that would also come back to you to accept that fund and award that project.
Did you want to add something, Rob, to?
Yeah, just on the Casement Trail, I mean, that, that's in the capital improvements plan. That's also extending that existing three-lane. When you go up to where Marlet and Casement is now, and that new three-lane cross-section, that's carrying that cross-section further south. So, you know, that's, all that is tied together, and it's all gonna kind of be interdependent upon receiving grants. And you all are gonna have opportunities, yay or nay, at coming up. I mean, we haven't even designed it, we have lots of concepts, but we'll have to, we'll have to hire an engineering firm to keep that one moving. But the K-18 one, that one's fully designed, and I believe KDOT will be bidding that one, so that one's locked in. If that helps a little bit, Mayor.
Yeah.
In some of your questions of what is solid and what is not, I think it's kind of...
Solid means locked, I guess, is what I'm looking for, the word locked in, as opposed to, hope we get it.
Correct, yep, awarded, actual, yep.
Like it's there, otherwise, I don't want people dipping in, and, because we don't know where it's gonna go, and I just want to make sure, the plan, I'm comfortable with the plan, the projected plan. The financing from the other ones where we don't have control over is my concern. I think the ones we can control, I'm comfortable with, with the dedicated resources that we have for it. It's the other pieces from KDOT and CDPG and those sources that I'm somewhat skeptical of at times. Let's see, you know, I think the one lane, you had a, a diagram where it was one-way. On one of the diagrams where the sidewalk, sidewalks were wider. I think that is something to look at, some of our sidewalks, some of our areas are getting so congested. And, um, so when I look at Kimball, and it's just now has a wider sidewalk on one side, and it has the regular sidewalk on one side. So, when I look at that new construction area, bikes can go opposite directions or anything on that one side, right? And they would go on the sidewalk, not on the road?
Yes, on the, on those higher-volume corridors, I don't think the plan would recommend any bicycles on those streets. And so, that's where you'd see a more tendency to recommend those multi-use paths following, think, Kimball, Seth Child, Tuttle Creek Boulevard, and some of those are longer range.
Right.
But, but that would be the safer recommendation, is to get the cyclists off of those streets and onto a dedicated, uh, multi-use trail or path.
And that's, that's what I want to see, because some of those are so congested, it's almost dangerous for cars when there's bike paths involved in all of that. I like the way the Kimball intersection, the Kimball, the entire way it's been constructed right now. I think having wider side, how long, how wide is that, the newer sidewalk or side path? I'm not sure what it's called anymore.
They're, well, so they're, they're all, they're eight to 10 feet, and is Kimball eight or 10?
I want to say it ended up 10.
Yeah.
But I could be incorrect.
Because it's pretty large, and pretty wide.
I think it ended up 10, so the, so if there's typically, if there's federal or state dollars involved in the project, it's almost, it's always 10. If there's local or other private dollars, then it, then it can be narrower than that, but not less than eight if you want to have that two-way bicycle traffic.
Because this says seven, seven feet preferred, or, I don't know, am I misreading something on one of the diagrams?
I don't want to hear.
Back, one back, go back one, right there.
Uh, so that, yeah, so, on the, the on-street facility in that case, would be that a street bike lane would be at least seven feet wide. For the multi-use, right, yeah, for the multi-use trails that are up on the curb and away from that, that, and since it's also two-way, that's when the minimum has to be eight, and then, 10 would be the ideal.
Okay. There's so many if, and, if and ands, but it's good. I think I'm comfortable with all of the proposals, just the funding source on some of those that I'm concerned about. And the feasibility study for the bridge, I think that is something we need to look at. Our rains are coming faster, we're getting more floods in some of those areas, and it's almost coming to a, a standstill. So, I think we need to look at some of those solutions. And I think even with the feasibility study, whatever they come out with, it's gonna be quite costly to put something there that would work. But as the proposals and everything that's presented, I'm comfortable accepting and supporting the plan. And as we get to the dedicated funding sources, we'll have those discussions as we move forward.
As we look at projects, it seems to me that if there's a sidewalk in place, like the south side of Kimball, but not the north side, I, at least there's a level of service there. And so that we could concentrate on some areas where there is no connectivity, there is a gap. Maybe we could, instead of concentrating on going in and fixing both sides to the new standard, we should pass it around a bit and not just redo those. As I agree, Kimball is, you know, those are big streets and a priority, but I'd like to make sure that we pass this to benefit for our community, for the people in our community. And some of the areas have never had, uh, the opportunity to have a bicycle and pedestrian path. So, anyway, that's just my initial thinking, anyway, as you consider priorities.
Thank you.
Uh, logistical, our kind of inquiry about the safe routes to school, can, can that be used, that fund? Can that be used for that, any part of that section, or any section, really? But thinking the Marlet loop, since it's county, is that, is there any limitation on that tax? Since it would be in the county?
You want me to help you out, Wyatt?
I can take that, too, but go ahead, Rob.
So, there is a safe route plan. And again, there's a steering committee and stakeholders, and a number of folks that are in this room are on that committee. And those projects have already been identified, and I think they're also incorporated with, in this plan as well. So, um, if you're diverting, you know, recreational trails and diverting safe routes to school dollars, I don't, I don't know if that's gonna be very wise if we ever want to renew that, that sales tax. So, um, we've been, we're actually ahead of schedule. I mean, April will be three years for the street sales tax, and 5% of that .2 sales tax, I think we're just over a half million, so we're almost 600,000, and we're only into year three, and we're only supposed to spend 100,000 per year. So, we're a little bit ahead of schedule on that plan, but we're leveraging KDOT grants to build more than what we originally anticipated. So, I don't know if I've answered your question or not, but there is a safe routes to school plan, there's a steering committee, we evaluate, and, and a lot of us are all on the same committees, trying to integrate into that. Whether the commission chooses to divert that dollars, I don't know, if that, that's for you all to debate.
The, that Marlet Trail that connects, that would kind of help connect the middle schools is not currently a part of the safe routes plan, and I don't know on what schedule that gets updated, but, you know, that could be a consideration. There are some rules in terms of, you know, how, how close you are, and, and a lot of the projects that have been identified in that plan are, are very close to schools, and, you know, really trying to get people across streets to the front door. That Marlet Trail is a, is a great connection, I think it would serve some of that school use, but it's a little bit further removed, maybe from then the intent of that, of that funding source.
And just like this plan and this program, there's a prioritization formula that has weighted factors and helping us to kind of decide and pick which one should move up or move down.
We've gotten to this position because, over the years, we have not required sidewalks on both sides. We've had one, we've had policies with one side, and, and for a while, no sidewalks were installed at all in some developments. What is our current policy about collectors, which is what some of these are?
Collectors and arterials, it's sidewalk on both sides.
Pardon?
Sidewalk and, sidewalk on both sides for collectors and arterial streets.
Okay, for both?
Yes.
And residential?
For the locals, it's one side.
One side, okay.
We are proposing in the UDL project.
Right.
To go with both sides.
Both sides.
Yes, because it's common practice for a lot of cities.
Yeah, I know it is, yeah. Thank you, I appreciate the reminder. It's, it's shifted over the years back and forth, and...
Yes.
Just needed to catch up.
And just, the homeowners responsible for the cost of the sidewalks, installation, maintenance, everything, right?
Yes.
So, yeah. As we, as we talk about trying to keep housing affordable, this is one of those things that sneaks up on you and taxing extra a few thousand bucks on, on top of everybody else's expenses for affordable housing. So, it's a great idea, but realize that that's, that's, that creates challenges on the other end when we're trying to do things and make housing more affordable. We can't keep expecting homeowners have additional expenses because of niceties, which are... So, I, I should shut up, probably, but that's a balance we have to continue to keep an eye on. It's nice to have those things, but then, we just go over the cost of that housing up that much more, and so, we have to continue to keep, keep watching those as we move forward and stuff, so.
I think that's a good point, but I think the more we talk about these things, there are something, there are a lot of neighborhoods that are lacking sidewalks, and it becomes a safety issue as well. But those are conversations we'll continue to have. I think one of the things we heard loud and clear during the studies and the conversations and dialogues that we were having before the sales tax was about trails, and how we wanted more connectivity and such. So, I think this is good to see that something is happening. And I think we will probably have these before, like we said, CECO Park and the two middle schools and all of that. I think this is something that the quality-of-life piece is not just for families and young children, but we have such a large variety of demographics in our community that use our trails. So, I think this is, it's, it's high time we're discussing it, and hopefully, we'll get some things going rather quickly. And especially the sidewalks piece as well, I think, and the lighting. I'm glad Evergy is doing the lighting piece. It's a big safety issue, and hopefully, they're doing, it's not gonna be so bright that impedes on some of the neighborhoods and their windows and their houses, but it's enough that you feel safe and you're not riding your bike or walking in the dark or jogging, when it's, and kind of scared to jog in the dark. So, I think this alleviates some of those apprehensions for our folks, so, yeah. Any public comment? Want to, to state your name and address, and we can fill out that sign-in sheet?
I'm Barbara Houston, I'm at 1408 Westwood, Manhattan. Okay, so, I only have one concern, and it's the lack of stop signs at Juliette and Pierre, at that school. So, I was almost killed there in May, two cars almost collided, killed myself, almost. My daughter, my granddaughter and I were there, and they, one blew the stop sign, the other was going. They came up and almost killed me, okay. Luckily, I was holding her in my arms because she wouldn't walk that day. So, then, right before Christmas, our principal almost got hit by a car also. So, you guys have approved a plan extending the curbs there to make it safer. Until you can get that funding, the school would appreciate it. I'm speaking on their behalf without their permission, but everyone would love it if you just put two stop, additional stop signs there. And no one thinks it'll be done because they've been asking for 10 years. That's it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ron Orchard. I'm a member of BikeWalk MHK, and I just wanted to say a couple words today. We've looked at, first of all, big kudos to the, to John Adams and Wyatt. They've created a fairly inclusive process, and we've been included in a lot of the projects and, and gotten feedback from us, so we definitely appreciate that. In, in general, we are, you know, our, our organization definitely is in support of, of the proposed bike-ped system plan. Any, any, any evolution of this infrastructure in our community is going to benefit, whether we're looking at the safety, quality of life, like Mayor Eddie mentions, or even just if we're looking at recruitment and, and thinking about economic development, which I know is a big buzz phrase here. So, we think those are all big benefits. The one thing I'd really encourage this commission to do is to, because there are a lot of comments about funding mechanisms, and I know that's very important eventually, but it seems like one of the main exercises of this entire process is imagining what 20 years could look like. And then, in a few months, we can get down to how are things actually paid for? But until we figure out what's our gold standard in this community, I, I don't know if we need to jump right to figuring out how we're already cutting costs. That's, that's my main comment, and I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you very much.
Did you sign in? Oh, you don't have that, okay, sorry about that.
Tom Carrigan, 705 Tuttle Street. I just wanted to say thanks and welcome to some of the new people there. And I'm just glad to see that this is something that you're looking at again, and I'm supporting them. And anything you guys can do to make this town more accessible to pedestrians and biking, I'm all for. I know that, you know, we gotta pay for everything, but whatever we can do to make that happen, I'm, I'm for it.
Thank you. Other comments?
Carol Seven, I live at 1030 Pierre Street. So we're neighbors. I want to thank you for the discussion and thanks to the steering committee for being very inclusive and the folks who got the grant to plan that. One thing that, that I would like to continue in this conversation is the, the fact that cycling is not just for recreation. And I heard that tonight and I was really grateful for that. Thank you.
Any comments from the commission?
I just had one thought, and that is that we have a uniform policy for developing our, for our new development and our sidewalks so that we don't disadvantage one side of the community versus the other. And on, you know, sometimes I look at the community and I think, wow, that's a pretty fancy sidewalk, but it's on one side of town and the other side of town is begging for sidewalks. So I think uniformity in our policy, administer, the way we make policy is important. So just to say that.
I agree. And, and, you know, we are, like you said, sidewalks are also part of safety. And that's the piece we also need to remember. What are you going to show us, Rob?
I was going to wait and see if you had closed public comment. But I wasn't anticipating you would.
No, public comment is closed.
No further comments? Okay. Let's talk about a couple of things that were brought up real quick. Let's talk about Juliet and Pierre and some phasing. So John did an excellent job of kind of referencing past transportation alternatives or TA grants and our lack of success last year. Last year, we did apply for Pierre and Juliet and it was unaccepted. And we trimmed it out this year intentionally because we believed we asked for too much. So we were trying to be more focused. We've been very successful on the Safe Routes to School, continue to leverage the sales tax dollars, continue to build more than what we thought we could with the original vote from, and support from the community. So what we have, obviously all of you know, let's see here, why am I turning, okay, so here's Juliet Street. No, thanks, I don't need that. So, you know, we've completed the brick project. There's a project for Juliet and Points, which addresses some pedestrian in terms of some bulbouts and also some lane configurations. It's been designed in-house and there's possibly some dollars that Jason has stashed away. And we could possibly do that project either late this year or next year. But first, we have to bring the storm sewer from the, the Sixth Street and Points in Houston project up and it comes right through this intersection. So we've got to accomplish that first because we're not going to, we're not going to mess with the curves, we're not going to mess with the traffic lights until we have that storm sewer in. It doesn't make any sense. So we got to get that in and then, and then we'll evaluate funding. And Mayor, you've alluded to it already tonight, secured funding that doesn't have property tax impact. We will reapply and that's part of the strategy is to go after the next section of Juliet all the way down to Pierre Street, which includes that intersection that she's talking about. So I don't want anyone to think that we're just abandoning that intersection because we didn't get the grant. We're just trying to be more strategic, understanding the amount of demands across the entire state on those limited dollars. So that's, that's kind of, that's one thing I wanted to address. I know it seems like forever, but I know one commissioner waited for a very long time for a trail to Northeast Park. And it was the same pot of money and it takes a long time sometimes to, to build up that support and get those loans. The other thing I want to talk about real quick is the Blue River Trail. So Brian probably last week briefed you on Project Five and Six. So Project Three, I just want to remind you, which is, is very close to the alignment of the Blue River Trail that we're talking about tonight, that's in design, that's coming up, hopefully for bid fairly soon. And one thing we talked about was perhaps an alternate bid when we have that contractor for concreting it. So that's one thing that we're kind of evaluating, could that contractor, whomever it may be, also do that work at the same time? So understand we are thinking of ways to keep dollars down and pair it up with projects that are nearby. The other thing too, we talked a lot about lighting tonight. That'll be one of the few trails that is lit. And one of the reasons why staff is supportive of lighting that trail is because there is no trails nor sidewalk along Hayes Drive. And frankly, Hayes Drive is not high on the priority list for stormwater projects for curb and guiding in order to build a sidewalk there. So that's why staff is supportive of, of adding that lighting on the trail because there's not lighting on Linear Trail, there's not lighting on Hudson. And some of those neighborhoods, frankly, I've heard, don't want it. They, they don't want people behind their homes in the evenings. So we really believe because of where it is, the specifics about that trail, that's why staff is supportive. So it is a, I guess, a unique decision and we're not, Wyatt, Eddie can jump me, we're not going to run around and start lighting every trail in the community.
The good thing is there are no homes along that stretch also.
That is a distinct.
Perfect.
Fact difference compared to, say, Hudson or, or some other sections.
Well, and, and too many people are walking on Hayes Drive at night the way it is. And so it would be nice to get them off of there, onto a safer.
Exactly.
Wyatt's got plans for, for additional signage, the lighting from West Star, the poles, materials will just be incorporated into the annual, I don't know, what is it? $12 now we're on or something for, per light for, that we pay for any street lights. Okay, I just wanted to, since you have public comment, I wanted to address some of the things and provide some more facts.
I'm glad you came up here and spoke because anything surrounding a school is of concern to me as far as safety. So that, that is a concern to me. Juliet, people do drive fast, even though there's that dip, they still, you know, just shoot right through it.
Inverted speed though, yep.
Yeah, it's like, and but they just go through. And it has, I've often wondered about the safety around that region and, so anything we can do to make it a little bit better. You know, you have more options as far as slowing down traffic than I, I do as, from your engineer's perspective. And I understand about the stormwater and all of that also. But I'm glad this is on our radar and I think we should try to see what we can do to slow down traffic or change behavior in that area. I don't know if it's putting a police officer once in a while or what, what it might take in the interim, because nobody should be afraid like that. And, I mean, something terrible can happen in some of those regions. And that's a high-traffic area too, compared to some of the other school zones that we have.
It could be we go back to a blinking light from a certain, for a half-hour period or something until the, I don't know. I was just going to comment on Rob's comment because for 10 years, I submitted capital improvement program forms to get a sidewalk along Knox Lane through the Northeast Park. And the staff kept saying, Linda, that's not what you need to do. I said, I have to put it in front of you every year to keep it on the radar. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, that was comprehensive. Any other comments? You know, I think bike and pedestrian, the organization, the advisory board is, has lots of wonderful, competent, very intelligent citizens on it that are very much aware and do a lot of research and base everything on data and, and funding sources and very dedicated to this community for the bikes and the pedestrian zones and the trails that we have. So I, I really appreciate all the work all of you put into it and seeking grants and funding sources, not just for our area, but the greater Manhattan and the Flint Hills region. So thank you and hopefully we will get most of these items accomplished in the next couple of years. Thank you. With that, any other questions? We are adjourned.